Do you need a paper one, though? Okay, sounds good. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We are here for our annual joint meeting with Laguna Beach City Council and Laguna Beach School District. So, thank you, everyone, for coming. So, let's start by, I'm going to call the meeting to order, and then let's do a roll call. We'll start with Ann Marie, and then Victoria can do a roll call for the school board.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Kemp.
Here.
Councilmember Whalen.
Here.
Mayor Protem Orgill.
Here.
Mayor Runagi.
Here, and then Victoria.
Thank you. Member Morgan. Member Malcheski. Clerk Hills.
Here.
President Perry.
Here.
And Member Kelly is unable to attend.
Sounds good, and then we're going to have our student board representative, Carter McKenzie, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Carter, do you want to?
Sure. Please stand, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good, thank you. So, unless there's anyone who appear who objects to this, what President Perry and I, who was also my third grade teacher, isn't that cool? What we were talking about is starting with student leaders' recognition, which is, thank you for all the students who are here to be recognized for your leadership in the schools. And then, we're going to take public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, and then we're going to go through the items on the agenda. So, there won't be an opportunity to provide public comment on each of those specific agenda items, but you would provide, so if you want to provide a comment on an agenda or non-agenda item, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, your chance to do so will be at in that first section. So, unless anyone has any objections, because we have a hard stop at 4:45. So, unless anyone has an objection to that, President Perry and I will head down there and provide certificates to the great student leaders that we have in our school district. So, we'll go ahead and do that.
You'll have to turn it on. Oh, it should be on. Okay, sorry about that. We are going to start with our elementary student leaders from PALS. So, I'd like to welcome up Harper Haverland. How about Danae Oravila? Henry Rolthing Gama? Lennon Bonfield? Emma Tran? Molly Mahoney? Great. And from top of the world, Rhett Darro from Student Council. Olivia McNally from Student Council. Gray Lee Pals? Liberty Hensel Pals? Drew Tikkach or Tykatch Pals? Camilla Fine from PALS. Wait, here's one. Okay. Now, from Thurston Middle School, Hadley Maynard, ASB co-president, with Cameron Cole, ASB co-president. Destin Deng as vice president. Alexis Berger as secretary. And Billy, I know you're here, Billy Kulaks as treasurer. Okay, and from Laguna Beach High School, Hadley Maynard, oh, no, that was Thurston, sorry about that, Henry Runagi as ASB president. Katie Dartes as ASB vice president. Peyton Taylor, secretary. Lola Sabel, treasurer. And Reina Jaurastani as senior class president. And then, we have our wonderful student board members, Carter McKenzie. And Kate Hennessy.
As I said earlier, we are on a tight schedule, so let's, who wants to provide? And if you missed it earlier, what we're going to do is take comments on both agenda and non-agenda items, all in this first part of the meeting. So, if, who here, raise your hand if you would like to speak on an agenda or a non-agenda item. So, let's do, what do you think? Two minutes or three minutes? Two? Let's, raise your hand if you'd like to speak on an agenda or a non-agenda item, and hold it really high. Okay, Mark, how many?
Five.
Five, okay, so let's do, let's do three minutes, then? I think we have time for three minutes, so. Let's do three minutes, and again, public comment on agenda or non-agenda items, and then we have, our student board rep is doing the timer, so Carter, good luck with that. It's the most important job on the dais, so. So, if we could line up, if you'd like to provide public comments on agenda or non-agenda items, now's your chance to do so.
Yes, I'm first? Yeah, okay. Hi, councilmembers, school board members, thank you. Ashley Brown, I've been a resident since 2008. I've got three kids in the district. I serve on school powers exec board, as well as PTA council. So, as you know, the district's current general obligation bond is expiring in 2028. We have the opportunity to renew it and unlock $80 million for the district to upgrade our facilities, some that were built more than 100 years ago. This is not just about classrooms and hallways, but all of the spaces that support learning, laboratories, libraries, athletic fields, auditoriums, and even common areas where students can interact and collaborate. Each of these spaces serves an essential function in shaping the experience of every student who walks through our doors. And because a district has an open school policy, many of these spaces are utilized by the community as well. You can just visit the high school track on any given Sunday, especially during flag football season, to see the whole community there. By prioritizing enhancing art facilities, we are demonstrating our commitment to the future of our students and the entire community. An extension of the current bond would be just that, an extension of the current amount taxpayers pay that we are already paying. We would see zero additional dollars added to our current tax bills. Renewing the bond would have to be put on the ballot in the 2026 general election. At the webinar on district finances with Jeff Dixon just a few weeks ago, school board President Perry said that the district may not want to pursue this renewal because the city would be pursuing their own bond in 2026. The information that's been shared with the community since then was that the city would not be pursuing their own bond, so I'm hoping city council members might be able to clarify that today. Additionally, I would love input from the city council members on if they would help champion the renewal of the school district bond in 2026. I believe investing in our school facilities is an investment in our entire community, positively influencing local property values and attracting families looking for high-quality education. Last time this was on the ballot, over 80% of voters agreed. I'm curious to see how valuable you all believe having improved school district facilities are to a thriving city, especially ones that are used by the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor Runagi. This will be very short. Many people will speak on the bond. You all know how I feel about investing in our facilities. This is actually at the end of your agenda. I hope we get to it. This is a public safety matter with unauthorized access to open space through the Nestal Road Access, which is owned by the city, and the Alpine Way Access, which is owned by the school district. As a member of your Coastal Green Belt Authority with Member Protem Orgill, we've been hearing about this matter for many years, that there is unauthorized use across these parcels that's creating some negative environmental degradation to the open space. And then, also, after the Malibu fires, much higher risk of fire danger because there's a lot of partying and nefarious behavior down there. I commend the city, Jeff Dixon, or sorry, the school district, for looking into the issue and agendizing it, working really collaboratively with the neighbors, OC Parks, the Rangers that are patrolling this area. I hope that we continue to do something similar on the Nestal Road Access. OC Parks has told us many times that although we can never prevent unauthorized access across land, that by closing off the many accesses, we can better patrol them. So, OC Parks could better control and patrol, our Laguna Beach Park Rangers could better patrol and control, and what do we all get out of that? We get safer communities, because one of the biggest risks that we've been hearing and discussing at Coastal Green Belt Authority, a separate body, right, that oversees the open space, is the risk of wildfire. So, I know it seems maybe somewhat tangential to the school district, but they've taken a really active role, and I hope the city does the same. I'm happy to discuss the matter with you. If anybody's interested, we've been actually working on it for almost four years. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly, and thank you for your service to the schools and now, and continue on the Green Belt Authority. We appreciate it.
Hello, my name's Jeff Rodesheimer, and I'm a parent and a community member and a longtime supporter of public schools. Let me start by saying I was raised to value truth and integrity. Most of those principles were instilled with me from my father, who was a captain in the Navy Jag Corps. And then, he went on to be lead attorney for the Department of Defense and the Electronics Logistics Department. With that, I love facts, as many of you know. I'm a data scientist. I do not like alternative facts, otherwise known as falsehoods. Recently, a letter to the editor from Board Member Howard Hills, the Indy, Letter to the Indy, misrepresented Fuel, a group I helped establish. We're a community-driven group with a diverse board of people from red, blue, and purple on the political spectrum. We are a 501(c)(4), dedicated to amplifying family voices, prioritizing student success, and increasing transparency so voters can make more informed decisions, all of them. There were, even though it said there was opinions, this is an opinion of Howard's, I want to go through some of the falsehoods. I only have time with two minutes left for the top 10, so here goes. Fuel is a lobbying group. Nope, I already mentioned we're 501(c)(4), you should read our mission. Fuel said the wrong voters decided the election. Please show me where that was said, we've never questioned who voted. Three, you wrote that we said the voter pool was too large. Please show me that. That claim is unsupported. If you have evidence, share it. If not, don't invent it. You said parents don't pay more attention than non-parents. Of course, parents pay more, are more engaged. We have the most at stake. That's common sense. I would love to do an impromptu survey after this meeting on the streets with you to prove my point. Anytime, actually, I'm available. Five, Fuel is in favor of incumbent regime. Show me where we said this, please, I beg you. Six, 80% of voters pay 80% of the $75 million in school funding. There is no data to support this. Prop 13 makes property tax contributions highly variable. Mr. Hills, your residence is in Laguna Woods, not Laguna Beach. That's public record. Here comes three whoppers and why I wrote, or came up here and was so offended by your letter. Fuel, in effect, attributes inferior voting rights, potentially politically speaking. Where did you get that? Fuel concludes that equal participation by non-parent voters has undue influence on elections. Nine, Fuel voter suppression agenda is not a great civics lesson. Seven through nine, according to Fuel's voter suppression and saying voting rights are inferior is offensive and baseless. We welcome all voters, parents and non-parents alike. Are you thinking this is why you lost so many past elections? I can't even believe you wrote this. Fuel is politically motivated. I've already gone through that, and we're not. This kind of reckless rhetoric damages public trust and distracts us from what really matters. No wonder people who counsel you, advised you not to write letters to editors.
Thank you. Good job with the timing, Carter. Keep it up, we appreciate it. I can never do that job, so anyway, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Shaheen Sheikh-Saddal. I'm a Laguna Beach parent, a PTA leader, and president of Families Unified for Education Laguna, also known as Fuel. I'm here to raise concerns about the conduct of LBUSD's school board member Sheri Morgan during a PTA meeting just held just yesterday at Laguna Beach High School, oh, actually, it was at the Family Resource Center that I attended. While Board Member Joan Malcheski was respectfully delivering an update, Ms. Morgan interrupted with an outburst, shouting over her, inserting misinformation. That was in addition to her later dropping an F-bomb in front of parents and school staff on school grounds and surreptitiously recording a PTA member without their consent video recording. One of her claims was that former city, or current city manager Dave Kiff had been hired on a 3-2 vote, contradicting the public record, which reflects a unanimous 5 to 0 city council vote on April 9, 2024, per the minutes. That unanimous vote has helped him be a successful city manager. More broadly, this pattern of behavior, shouting over fellow officials, disrupting a school-based meeting, violating two-way consent laws, and using profane language in a public setting is unacceptable from any elected leader. As parents, we are asked to model respectful conduct and expect that from our students who would have been reprimanded had they behaved as Member Morgan had, did. We should expect no less from our public officials, whether in the city or in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Evening. Good afternoon. Well, if you think that's bad, you should come to the actual meetings. Anyway, good afternoon, council, board, city manager, and acting superintendent, and litany of other people here. So, Steve McIntosh here with Sensible Laguna. As my distinguished colleague, Gary Kasich, as mentioned many times in both council and board meetings, you're the two biggest entities in town, so why the heck not work together? With changes in the school board, the city manager, and the coming district superintendent, we at Sensible Laguna believe it is a fantastic opportunity to rekindle the past open, great working relationship between the city and the district that had become a challenge in the past few years. In today's private business climate, working smart collaboratively and practicing innovative out-of-the-box thinking is what creates great successes. It's about time that municipalities and school districts wake up and start thinking and working in the same way in general. Instead of saying, "We can't do this, we're not set up to do that," why not say, "Why can't we do this?" Or, "How can we make that happen?" Because of egos and equated thinking, or both, the district and city have missed out on some great opportunities to collaborate. Let's put those days behind us and move forward in the spirit of cooperation. The expanded sharing of resources, facilities, ideas, plans, hopes, and dreams are not just cliches, but can certainly become bigger realities, like pools, parks, volleyball trails, parking, housing, and yes, safety and well-being of the community, just to name a few. Don't forget, you all work for the entire community. Kids or no kids, every single resident of this town has a stake and an interest in the success of both of the entities that you have been elected to govern and that we give our hard-earned dollars to support. On the other hand, we as community members must not forget that you are only human and that you were fairly elected. We need to give you the benefit of the doubt and let you do your elected jobs. We all want, all we want in return is honesty, good communication, openness for ideas, respect, and a prudent exercise of your fiduciary responsibilities. Just don't keep us in the dark and don't forget about us. We look forward to the cooperation and camaraderie that has worked in the past becoming even better. And as always, Sensible Laguna remains committed to help in any way we can, and you know where to find us. Thank you all, and have a great, positive, and productive meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And just as a reminder, Jean, I see you walking in, we're doing all of the agenda and non-agenda items, all at the beginning, so if you want to speak on the coastal, okay? I was just looking out for you.
Hi. I've lived here for about 35 years. I have three children, born here, went to school here, two graduated from here. The third one, we decided we were done. So, he graduated from Jay Sarah, best thing we ever did. And I want to thank the previous board and Valoria for making it such a terrible situation that we moved him somewhere else, because we were devastated to have to do that. So, I'm glad to see some things trying to change and new people, new blood. But my question is for the city, and I'm not sure how this works. In 2017, when my oldest child graduated, there were 3,000 students in the district. Now, there's 2,400. So, does the budget just keep inflating and inflating regardless of how the student population dwindles? And it's not just an aging city. There's at least 400 students that go to private schools that I know of. I've made the phone calls. There's probably more, because I didn't call every private school. But I'm just curious how that reflects in the school budgets. And as far as I know, there's only like two facilities that are shared, the pool and the track, because I don't think I'm allowed to walk through the school buildings or anything like that. And if you're prioritizing someone being a parent, being more involved, then I'm sure Jim Kelly would have something to say about that, because I don't think he has children. And I think everything relating to the school, the city, involves every resident, whether they own, rent, you know, born here, came here a few years ago, lived here 35 years, proud to raise their kids here, you know? Just a thought. But I'm really curious about the budgeting, because we have like the most inflated budget. I think we had a superintendent for each school with only four schools. So, I mean, the city has a lot of things needed to be attended to as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to weigh in on an agenda or a non-agenda item? This will be your final opportunity to speak for the rest of the meeting, because we're not taking, so just to act now, stand up now, or forever hold your peace, so. Okay, so I'm going to bring this back to the council and to the board. Do we, is it appropriate to answer any of those questions that were asked about, towards city manager? Do you have any?
I do one about the question about the bond, if there's.
Yeah, you want to answer on the bond?
The city doesn't have a bond plan for November of 26 or June of 26. What we have been talking about, as Councilmember Orgill and Whalen know, we have been talking about a different kind of revenue measure. It wouldn't be property tax-based like a bond would be. Those are, as I understand it, lower thresholds for schools than they are for cities. So, we've talked about potentially going to the ballot with a hotel bed tax increase or a sales tax increase, predominantly to look at things like fire safety, and it would probably be structured as a general tax, but again, we're just kind of investigating the possibility of that. So, that's, that's at least the city's plans, any other council members would add to that if they'd like.
Okay, and then, I think the other question was just about how the schools are funded, and the schools are, Jeff, do you want to answer that question about how schools are funded in Laguna?
Yeah, happy to. I don't want there to be confusion as if the city funds through, go through the city to the schools. Rather than that, our funding is primarily based on local property tax revenue, so a portion of the assessed valuation of people's homes and the properties that they own funds our school district. So, it is, to clear things up, it is not based on enrollment. It is based primarily on the assessed valuation of the properties within the district boundaries.
Got it.
Yeah, there's one superintendent for the school district. It's not like LA Unified where they have multiple.
Okay, good. Thank you for those, any other?
Can you just touch briefly on the governance? I think it would be worth making sure that it's clear that the two bodies are completely separated.
They are. In fact, the city gets a portion of property tax in addition to other special taxes the city has. The school district gets some state funding, and that is based on enrollment, but it is very small. It's categorical funding, so it's restricted, and the bulk of our revenue actually comes from our local property tax. Every school district in the state of California gets local property tax as part of their revenue. To be a community-funded district simply means that the amount of local property tax that we're receiving exceeds what the state minimum funding amount would be for our district based on the enrollment.
Got it. Okay. And, you know, before, just to council member, or to Mayor Protem Orgill's point, I think, you know, we're separate, distinct entities, but I think we all have a shared, you know, our job at the city is basically, in my view, public safety, infrastructure, and efficient government services, right? If you've ever been to the planning department, we could be more efficient, so we're working on that. You know, the school district, you guys have in many ways more, a harder and a more important responsibility, which is about, you know, the future of the world, of our country, and of our community. And I think in Laguna Beach, we are so lucky to have world-class public school systems and world-class facilities, and I'm grateful, you know, Bob was the leader, was a leader on the school board, I think, at the time during the first bond, right? And so, Bob, I'm grateful that I was able to go to the schools, because, you know, with better facilities than if you had not been involved. And I think that our school district is great because of all the people in our community who are so deeply invested. And so, anyway, you guys have a very important job, and it's so important that we continue to have excellence in our schools. So, I don't know, President Perry, you want to go and then?
I just wanted to say that I do think it's really important and look forward to working with city council and the school district, and we have brainstormed quite a few different ways that we could. And like for the fire mitigation, I loved that that was part of a flow project for some of the students, and there are a lot of things like that.
Yeah, and Howard?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Jeff to respond a little bit. First of all, when you did the last bond, I was watching on TV and got up and ran down to the district office and supported the last bond you did. And so, we're going to have to look at financing options, obviously, but I just wanted to ask you to respond, the comment from the public was, you know, that I guess, over the last five, could you just give us a summary, over the last five years, what has been the enrollment scenario? Has there been a drop in enrollment, how much? And during the last five years, how much has the, because we don't do average daily attendance, how much has the, how much is the, either the? the per pupil's cost or the overall amount of funding that comes from property taxes for the school district?
Yeah, good question. So we have seen a steady decline in enrollment over the years. It can be primarily attributed, I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but certainly you can find them in a lot of our budget and facilities reports. I think what we've seen now is somewhat of a steadiness. What we had in the past was smaller kindergarten cohorts and first grade cohorts coming in and larger graduating classes going out. So when you start replacing a class of 225 graduating students with a class of, say, 180 elementary, kindergartner, first graders, you're going to see a decline. We saw it first at our elementary schools. It slowly has progressed through the middle school, and now we're seeing it at the high school. With our current forecast, and now projections are never exactly wrong, but hopefully close, we're seeing it stabilize, and it is about the 2,300 mark. But yeah, it was about 3,000 when I started in 2014, and we're about that 2,400 mark right now.
Okay. And so...
How much has the property tax revenues coming in from property taxes increased over the last five years or so? Or just where are we at right now?
The per spending, or spending per student is probably close to about $35,000 right now. And yes, progressively, because our property tax assessments have gone up in terms of revenue, and we don't budget for a profit, so we're trying to spend current year dollars on those students, the amount per spending per student has gone up year over year.
And so, I want to be careful because we kind of got, it's my fault that we got off the agenda, but let's appreciate the questions and, you know, from all the public and everyone, so let's move to...
Alex, I want to make a clarification.
Okay, go ahead.
I think one of the speakers mentioned, for some reason, there's been talk about the vote for Dave. Dave had a 5-0 vote on the record. This is the kind of stuff I don't like going around town, is it's gossip and ridiculous. I don't know. Yeah. Well, Dave's doing a great job, and I don't like it when stuff like that gets out there in the public floating around, so, thank you.
... data have, do not have a consensus, and if that information is given to you in this press, I deeply apologize and... It's my mistake because I did not check the reference, and I'm usually very good at checking my references. But at the end of the day, the point was addressing a comment made about consensus in hiring different people and that you cannot have consensus and still have excellence come forward and bring people together. And that's a job that I believe that you have done. I've met with you. I know that the community and staff thinks you're doing a great job. And so that was more the point of the comment. And to my, and I do apologize, I did not check the data. I usually do that, but I think it was, I was trying to use it as a positive in the fact that he is doing a great job and we don't need to have a consensus to hire a good person because we are interviewing superintendents on...
So we had a consensus, just to be clear. We have the best city manager in the state of California. We had, so we had a consensus, and I think that's really important that we have... Wait, hold on, hold on. We're not gonna, we don't, no clapping. We don't do any clapping here. So I just want to make that very clear. We're very lucky to have Dave, and Dave hates attention, so let's move to, let's, Jeff, let's talk about the MOU for the pool. So kick us off on that, Jeff.
Yeah, so as the city manager and I have spoken, we think with the joint use, the formal joint use going away on the pool, we want to make sure that all of our city residents that are outside of our school still get access to our pool. We want our pool used. So we think by crafting a memorandum of understanding between the city and the school district, and we're working on the draft now, we can establish formal parameters to establish what those times would look like for the city to help with the recreation planning for the city programs as well as aligning and overlapping with our school district aquatics programs. So what we would request is that city council and school board would direct staff to work together to finalize that memorandum of understanding that, so we can bring it back for approval at a later date.
Got it, thank you. Any questions from, you want to start with, let's start with the council, Bob?
I just had, I think it's great you're working on it already and I look forward to coming forward. I couldn't agree more, Jeff, that, you know, that we need to make sure that asset is available to the entire community and the city will pay its share for, based on the usage in the MOU. One thing, you know, that we had a lot of back and forth on design and issues, and at the end, one of the things that I was, and maybe this is because we weren't all in and that's just the way it's going to be, but I was disappointed at the lack of locker room facilities for community members. And I think it's outside showers and I don't know, but has that evolved at all with the reduction of the pool from 50 to 45 meters?
Yeah, it has. There's been added space to the separate community building, if you remember that, off to the northeast side of the project line. It evolved from being just indoor restrooms to now including a community room that has an indoor shower and additional locker room space. So yeah, that is feedback we heard and implemented into the design.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Let's just go around maybe this way, and then we'll, so finally, Hallie?
Just a quick question. Can you speak a little bit about the opportunity for community engagement in terms of specific operating hours, et cetera? I know there's a lot of community members who are interested in what their access to the pool will be.
Sure. I think that would be kind of one of the bases for this MOU that we want to establish is to figure out what those parameters would be and see how we could best work together to figure that out.
Yeah, Jeff, I just had a quick question on the schedule. What is the schedule?
Currently, we're still on schedule, and we would look for a March construction beginning. That's next March in '26, and we estimate construction would take about 11 months. So that would get us to about February of 2027.
Okay, thanks.
Anything?
The city's currently researching the remodel of our library, and we have a certain dollars for, around $4 million, I believe, set aside for that project. And through the, over the last several months, I've heard that a lot of the students within the district travel outside of town.
So you're talking about the library?
Yeah. What did I say?
This, because we were just talking about the pool right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Should I just finish real quick?
Well, no, because it's a really good idea, it's just not on the agenda. So I think, President Perry, do you want to go or start with?
I...
I think it's a great idea.
I agree with you about the library. That'll be another discussion, though. Jeff, could you explain to people how we're going to handle the shallow part because we realize we need some shallow areas in the pool?
Sure. So one option that exists, and I've shared this with the board and some city staff members, is they are platforms that you can go and you can make whatever portion of the pool as shallow as you want, as big as you want. So in theory, you can make the entire pool a shallow pool, and that's just one of many options, but we haven't gotten too deep into exploring other platform type ideas. We just know it would be a good temporary option or portable option, I should say. And so we know the technology exists, and we just want to make sure that people understand that, that the idea of any facility that we do in the school district is maximize flexibility. And so that's something that we want to keep. We always deal with pools, with buildings, with any sports fields, et cetera.
And I can see that really helping the community in the summer when there's swim lessons. And we, you know, as a district, we also have TK and pre-K now, so we have lots of little ones that we would like to be able to use the pool. So it sounds like it might be a good option.
Howard?
Board member Morgan and I met this morning with the pool committee, the design committee, and I just want to say, I'm really excited about the direction the pool design work is taking. I think that, you know, the last thing we want to do ever in Laguna Beach is pit individual private property owners against the general welfare of the community. Obviously, we want to protect individual property owners, and we want to take care of the general welfare of the community, and I think we're getting closer. I think the changes that have been made by the team that Jeff and your team that respond to the neighbors has been really forthcoming, and so some pretty exciting stuff going on there. And so, I just mentioned very quickly on the subject of the shallow end of the pool, I'll let Sherry talk about that because she's more of an expert on it than I am. I know they're struggling with it a little bit because I know from my own experience that if you're going to move from one depth to another depth, there are requirements about how many feet it takes to have a gradual, a gradual change. And if you don't comply with that and somebody gets hurt, there can be real liability issues associated with that. So there's some stuff like that details, but I think overall, the district is doing a really good job of responding to the neighbors. I'd just like to also just say this. I view this as kind of a me-casas, su casas thing for the school district and the city that both at that site, at that pool, I think it's regrettable that the agreement wasn't reached last year or the year before about it. But also as to the other properties that the school district has elsewhere in the district that include the options of maybe doing another pool there, I really view this as property that we all own together and that we need to do what's right for the community. And I'm speaking for myself right now. There may be people from the school district here don't agree with me at all, but I just want to say that both on this pool and what we do here and what we do in the future with other property and other pool developments, when I, you know, I really worry about this algae and the killing the animals, and eventually is there going to be something because of acidification or whatever that makes it so, you know, people have to be careful about going in the ocean. So we got, this is a water community and a swimming community and a water sports and an aquatic community. So I think we should be looking long-term at really collaborating on water and aquatic facilities.
I don't have a lot to add except to say thank you. I know that Kelly Osbourne and Jan Bickers worked for a long time with the city, and so our conversations have been together on the pool for some time, and I'm glad we're at a point where the pool is going to be constructed. And I trust that Dave Kiff and Jeff Dixon will come up with an MOU that recognizes the student needs around our athletic programs and provides lots of time and space to the community, which as a school board member, I have always thought was essential to whatever we construct. I swim in the pool also, so I'm excited that we reach this, and I thank the city council for working with us through the last couple of years on this.
Great.
Thank you. It was a very productive meeting, and again, my apologies. I, we did have a good productive meeting. Was that this morning? Yesterday? That was this morning. It's been a busy couple of days. The, I just wanted, can you clarify the timeline again because I don't think that's quite the timeline? I know there was a little bit of concern that we were on a little bit of a tight timeline. Like, I thought I heard a March to March, so maybe I misheard yesterday or this morning on the timeline on that, and then what steps that we have to do between now and the breaking ground on the pool. And then the, I know I spoke at length trying to figure out, trying to ask if there was a way that the pool entry was looked at to embrace our youngest community members that want to attend with their parents, where the parents may not want to get in the water, where there's two feet entry. I know I asked that a couple of different ways today, how that had been looked at. So I think it's important that the community and the city understands that there, that we are, that, I know I have tried to pursue that angle of how can we make sure we're accommodating every single person in our community? Because what we had was a community asset, and what we're putting back is almost, because if we can't accommodate those youngest without the parents in the water, that's probably the one usage of the pool that we're missing at this point, unless we add the platforms, which is great, but that's only going to be a summer solution, correct?
Okay, a lot of questions.
The timeline and the two feet, sorry.
No, the platforms are portable, so it can be summer, it could be weekend, it could be anything. And I'll briefly touch on the timeline and the next steps because I know this is an MOU specific item, but I think it's important. So March construction to a March is very, very similar to when I say March to end of February. It's 11 and 12 months construction. It's hard to predict because you could have weather delays, you could have, for us, there could be even delays. We've talked about fire mitigation on red flag days delaying construction, so I think that's an important point to bring up. What we have from now until we bid the work, we still need to get approval from the state architect. So when Clerk Hills talks about that very specific code compliance with the incline and the pool going from shallow to deep, that is one of those codes that is looked at by the state architect, and we have no choice but to abide by that. So between now and then, we'll seek award approval to go out to bid for the construction of the work, and then we have to come back to the board for approval of those bids before we start construction. So we're looking at that sometime, hopefully December, January.
Good, thank you.
2027, right? Conclusion?
Let's go to our student board reps. Kate or Carter, do you have any questions or input?
I don't think so. Let's just keep it going, yeah.
Okay, keep the pool moving. Kate? Okay. So are we looking for a motion here or what are we looking for? And do we do separate motions as individual bodies, Megan, or what do we? Separate? So what I, I mean, I think this pool is long overdue. I'm very excited about it. I would move the recommended action on this. Go ahead, Bob.
I just had one, I'd like to, since it's our motion for our staff. This isn't the only MOU we have with the district. I would like to ask that in addition to looking, working with to create the MOU on the pool, that our staff look at the other existing MOUs and see if they need to be updated at all. They have expiration dates, I can't remember what they are.
Like the JPA agreement for the joint use for...
Tennis courts, other facilities.
Other than theater, I think.
Since we're engaged in the process, maybe we can just direct our staff to look at all of them and...
So is that, I accept that friendly amendment to my motion if that's what you were proposing. So I had to move the recommended action, move that we, you know, direct staff on this MOU, and then also have staff come back to us with any opportunities for improving our existing MOUs or joint use agreements.
Yeah, second.
Two second of that? Okay, all in favor on the city council side? Aye.
Aye.
You want to take it over here?
Would that include, like, we combine together for adult education?
We just approved adult education last night.
Yeah, so, I mean, the city and the district. So would that be part of an MOU or not?
I don't think that was an, you know, we had joint use agreements that were more related to the fields and the tennis courts and that kind of thing. That's what I had in mind there.
It's a joint agreement but not an MOU.
Yeah, yeah.
Since we both...
It was a joint agreement, I think. You're right. Maybe it was a joint agreement, yeah.
Thanks.
I move that we direct staff to work on the MOU with Dave Kiff.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good. Look at that consensus. Perfect. So let's now take item, item number three, and I want to defer to Councilmember Jones on this because she's sort of our, I'm her alternate, but she's the liaison to the environmental committee. So President Perry and I talked about the importance of climate action and sustainability, which is really core to the identity of Laguna Beach, and I understand, you know, the district over the last few years has shown tremendous leadership in terms of the, you know, proposed energy efficiency and solar, which I think is going to get you guys to 20, to net zero by 2030, right?
That's what we're hoping.
And then the city, we're trying to do, we have our own climate action plan, and one of the recommended actions that actually, Bob, you know, added, I think, to the motion when we discussed this before was the idea of more collaboration between our agencies in terms of best practices when we were doing our climate action plan. And so, and I totally agree with that as well. So this was sort of an outcome of that. Councilmember Jones and I have been talking to the city manager about, you know, whether we need ad hoc committee or what, a better, or if a better approach would just be to direct staff in terms, because of the kind of technical nature of the procurement process for solar. So I don't know, Councilmember Jones, if you wanted to weigh in on the best approach here.
I believe strongly that the best approach would be to direct staff from the city's perspective and from the school district's perspective to work together on these initiatives. I don't believe that we need an ad hoc committee. I don't think that we are going to add the kind of technical expertise and on-the-ground knowledge that our staff are going to be able to do.
Yeah, because ultimately, we have the same goal of getting, of advancing these initiatives, and so it's a question of how do we get it done as quickly as possible, the most cost-effective way?
Absolutely. And we are not going to be the experts on, you know, the implementation plans and the procurement processes and all that, right? The staff is going to be the experts on that. So I think it's really important that our direction be to support staff in doing their best work collaboratively.
And then where is the, you guys, is that some, that item that came, the, what's it called? The COP, or is that, what's the status of that with the school district?
I can take that. We put, since our goal is to be carbon neutral by 2030, and the COP supports projects that would take approximately two years of construction to be done, we put that on hold till we get our new superintendent, so we can bring them on board, because that's a very big deal and that's a really big accomplishment. And it'd be really helpful, I think, with the new superintendent to give him or her an opportunity to be part of that process and help lead that initiative, because that's a real notch on the belt for any, anyone in a leadership position, especially in education, Because that's a real notch on the belt for any, anyone in leadership position, especially in education, because there's a lot of learning opportunities that come with sustainability improvements.
What a cool thing for the entire community. So, yeah. Sherry?
What is the city's, does the city have a deadline to be carbon neutral? And is the deadline, it's, the initiative is 2045, correct? It's not 2030. That's just a date that we've put on it. So we could have some flexibility if necessary, if that means that we could save money and collaborate with the city. And if that's what the findings come to where it's 2031 versus 20.
If we had a package in front of us that could get us to 2030 and a cost where we would save money over time, I would support that 100%. We haven't been able to do that. We've had issues in terms of our procurement process, but I think we are, we want to get this done as soon as possible. And then the good thing about, you know, the faster that you guys are able to do it, that helps our numbers. So we always, we always appreciate that. Because I think this, you know, that you're a big contributor in terms of emissions as the school district, so.
You don't have like a timeline that you're trying to get. So if we can bring you in and get to 2030 collectively, that's a huge boon as well. Because you don't really have a target date that you're trying to hit.
And I think what, yeah, and just sharing best practices as we go about doing that. And, you know, there's so many, with all these tax credits through direct pay that are, could go away with this administration. I think, you know, the sooner we act, so, you know, our, I think, however, this council is committed to that. And, you know, I'm hoping the school board is as well to, but it's complicated stuff, right? In terms of leveraging all these tax credits. So we, we would appreciate, you know, your insights as well as, you know, us giving any insights that we have. But I think I was really impressed when I read the document on that and the fact that you were going to create long-term cost savings with, because of the tax credits would end, and the reduction in, in costs over time, so.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that we're not suggesting by having the city and the school district work together that we have any intention of changing the date of the 2030. That's already a vote that the school board took, where our effort is to be carbon neutral by 2030. We did a lot of work on getting there and we are happy to work with the city on sharing information. But that doesn't in any way change the date that we plan to get to our, just so that people in the community know that that's not what we're suggesting. And I think it's great for the city and the school board to work together and share information because this is a great city effort to, to make the city carbon neutral.
We do, we do have different dates in the plan. Jeremy Fremont's here. Maybe he can, I think it's 45. But our, like our fleet electric, fleet electrification is 2030. So we've got different targets along the way to kind of get us there, but the ultimate is 2045.
So just so I understand then, so you're looking just to seek partnership in the information process, not the necessarily procurement and purchasing to be able to get to there to 2030 yourselves?
Information as it relates to best practices. So, you know, Jeff, Jeff talking about the experience that you guys have had in terms of what you've done and sharing that with Dave and our, our team. So it's not doing, not necessar, and maybe if there's an opportunity for that, but just sharing best practices and, because as, yes, so that's the goal. So is there any other, any other comments on this item? I think Councilmember Jones articulated it well. So do you want to make the motion on, on the next steps, Hallie, for us?
Sure. I move that we direct staff, city staff to work with school district staff to explore opportunities to, I don't have my reading glasses on, so I'm having trouble with all the language. To explore opportunities to further both of our sustainability initiatives.
And maybe, yeah, collaborate on best practices to implement the sustainability goals.
What you said.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, five oh. And then President Perry?
I make a motion to direct school district staff to work with the city to share information and forward sustainability plans.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, do the student board reps, do you guys have anything on this? Are you supportive? Okay, good. That's great to hear. Our final item is an update regarding both the city and the district assisting the protection of open space from unauthorized entry points in conjunction with the Orange County Parks. Kelly Osborne references, you know, Mayor Pro Tem Orgill, we're looking for your, your solution here because you're on the Green Belt Authority, so. But should we, Jeff or Dave, do you have, Dave? Go ahead.
Actually, I think Chief Calvert may be able to give the best update on this one.
I saw him leave the room, so we're.
Oh yeah, he's got his thing at 5:00. I can, I can, did he really leave? Okay. All right. He has been working with OC Parks. Actually, Councilmember Jones may be able to fill us in too, on making sure that there are more patrols. And then I think Jeff will talk about, we're talking about some additional fencing, but the communication lines are certainly open to have more park rangers back there. And I mean, the county park rangers as well as our city teams. We have to stop at the city limits, but we can certainly be partners in that. Because I, please know that the folks that have brought this up, there's, there's a lot of awareness that folks shouldn't be back there, folks shouldn't be damaging the habitat. And there's both a fire risk and a vandalism risk. So hopefully we're on it.
And I can say from the school district perspective, as you know, we own the land up at Alpine that would prevent access to that specific point. Ryan Zaid, our director of facilities and sustainability, has been meeting with our neighbors up on Alpine as well as OC Parks to talk about proposed solutions as the board had directed us to do. And this week, one of the options that we're exploring is the addition of fencing. But we're going to put up story polls to see exactly where that fencing could best be served and not impact any viewing issues. And still serve as a strong deterrent to prevent access. So that's in progress right now.
I see Chief Calvert, you're back. We're talking about the last item. If you want to, is there anything you're looking for, for Chief Calvert to add? Or you think you summarized it, Dave?
So we began conversations with OC Parks on wildfire mitigation. And one of their suggestions was adding a fence on Nestal and also on Alpine. And so working with and collaboration with the district, we're at a point where it's going to be working with the community and the school board to see if that's a feasible option to deter people from entering those unlawful areas. They've, they've set up cameras out there and they're tracking in a week, 800 to 1,000 people walking into those unlawful areas.
Wow.
I'm actually being conservative with that number right now. I actually think it's more than that.
So your recommendation is that we need the two fences that you just, on the two areas that you identified?
That's my recommendation. You know, there's, we have a record of graffiti, kids going out there drinking and smoking. Obviously, high, high danger wildfire area. And OC Parks has limited resources. So they may only have one or two park rangers for the entire county on duty at any given time, which is not sufficient to deter people from entering those areas.
And then do we need, who, who needs to give approval for this? Is this, do we need OC Parks approval or is this a city approval? And do we know?
I can say for the district side, it's our property. We can put up a fence if it's deemed appropriate. We just want to be very careful. We work with our neighbors and we don't, because there could be a view issue if we put up a fence too high. Or we could just be pushing the problem to a different entry point. And so we want to be very thoughtful with that. But like I said, we're, we're putting up story polls this week. So we are at least exploring these options with OC Parks and our neighbors.
Chief Calvert, do you think that the fences would be a deterrent from the thousand people you see on these cameras going in?
In, in my estimation, you know, I want to, you know, take the, the advice or guidance from OC Parks. And they feel very strongly that installing both of these fences will deter people from entering those, those areas.
Do, I just, just thank you, chief. And I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank Gene Felder and the Top of the World Community Association. Because when this got a little bit stalled, they came in and gave us a good prod on it. And I also want to say that when I was Carter's age and when I, when I was doing what he was doing, Jim Dilly appointed me as the youth representative on the original Green Belt Committee. And Jim Delly, Dilly used to talk about this problem. He, he talked, he said, the more successful we are, the more we're going to become an attractive nuisance. And so Jim Dilly was a visionary, visionary in many ways, including he understood that there was going to be these kind of issues.
And when you look at the maps, it's clear the trails have been made. So I was asking, you know, they're like, all those are unlawful trails. And we actually have people complaining about the graffiti out there. And the person taking pictures of the graffiti is actually in an unlawful area trespassing. So Public Works did a really good job of going out there and cleaning all of it up.
Okay.
And Steve, I really appreciate your commitment to working with Orange County Parks and with the school district. I think it's a great example of collaboration and how we're actually going to solve a problem by working together. And if you run into any slowdowns, you know, the county is way slower than the city. So if you run into any slowdowns, I would hope that you would bring that back to council to see if we can help a little bit.
Yep, absolutely. Appreciate the support. I know that OC Parks is eager to get the fences installed. And I know this has been a discussion and I'm, I'm task oriented, so I like seeing things get done. So hopefully we can cross the finish line and make it happen.
So when, can we get a date from you guys about when this could be considered? Is that possible at this point?
It's already under consideration. So we're just working with the neighbors to see where that fence would go and make sure it's not going to cause any issues for their views or, and make sure that it actually doesn't push the problem, like I said, to another location. We want to be real thoughtful with that, but it's in process.
Good.
I just wanted to thank too the collaboration and thank Mr. Felder for bringing it back to our attention because I think the original letter was dated September. And when he, of 2024, when he asked, can we prod this along? Because it is a huge, it's a fire hazard. And I think in January, when we all kind of thought, okay, we have to do something. So thank you for bringing that forward and the community voice being that important. Thank you.
Good. So this isn't any, any other discussion. This is an informational item. And as Chief Calvert chair, I want to say one of the things that, you know, I talked at the beginning about public safety and our, our collaboration on the SRO program, I think has been really important. What's more important than the safety of the, the kids at the schools? So we have, you know, we partner on that. And if there's opportunities to collaborate further, I know we, we're working on finally fixing the issue with the El Moro. You know, where, where people could potentially call nine, yeah, for, which I guess would be going on forever. So I know, you know, thanks to our police chief and acting superintendent, we're, we're hopefully going to solve that once and for all. So we don't have to think about that issue anymore. So anyway, appreciate the, the longstanding collaboration on public safety and, and I'm glad that you guys are on top of this, this, what seems to be a really important issue. So, good. Okay, we're at 4:46. So we have a hard stop. Good meeting, everyone. Thank you and have a, have a great rest of, of the evening. So thanks for, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
You?
We'll adjourn to the city council special budget meeting at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, May 13th.